Manny and uh, John Roberts talked for Wayne. Amazing interest. And they uh, sent him an offer letter.
You know what he wants to do?
Yeah.
That's great. Thanks for saying that. It's a lot of hours.
He just seemed to look it over. I was like. He's our money.
Yeah, he's our money. Keep it permanent. I think for the first two years.
Yeah.
They were not. We're probably going to rate it as well as. So I think we're going to.
I don't know. December seventeenth, April.
Got forty more seconds to wind down those conversations. They got real quiet. All right, I'll start uh, prepping. So uh, we've got two council members that aren't here, Craig Pearson and Councilmember Stephanie Obanion. Uh, Craig was going to be participating by Zoom, uh, but he's unable to do so. But uh, Stephanie is here. She's participating from cross planes. Um, so thanks for being here, Stephanie. Can I assume you can hear us?
I can hear you. I think we're still working on my video.
Okay, all right, all right. We can hear you as well, so we can continue to participate or continue to go. All right, so today, there's, I think there's two big things. Let's just say there's two big things. Number one is our newest U.S. citizen, Matt Bates, will be leading us in the pledge allegiance to the U.S. flag. And in honor of rivalry week, I will be leading us in the pledge to the Texas. And red, white and blue will work, you know, that'll, that'll work. And then uh, Wayne Carpenter will give us an indication and also uh, put in a good word for the home team there. No, I'm talking to our home team. Yeah. All right, uh, join us and Matt, uh, take it away.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to ZD Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly father, we thank you so much. This special time of the year, we have so many, many things to be thankful for in our community. As we gather tonight to do the business of our citizens, we ask you to guide us in the decisions that we might make. We thank you for the blessing of living in Belton, Texas, in the United States of America, and for the freedoms that we all enjoy and help us to remember to protect them. We want to reach out, especially travelers or first responders in this busy time of the year and help please keep us safe. Uh, I would ask you to put your healing hand on the, on the Holmes and Lee family and the loss of a loved one at this, at this difficult time of the year. And again, forgive us when we fail thee. And dear Lord, we sure do appreciate those burnt orange sunsets. Amen.
Amen. Goodness.
Amen and amen.
I guess it's a good thing I'm not there tonight. Wow. God.
All right, so um, first item on our agenda is public comments. I don't have any written here, but if anyone wishes to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda, you may do so. Limit to three minutes. There being no one rushing to the podium, we will close public comments and go to our consent agenda. Items three through eight can be enacted by a single motion. Uh, if any uh, one wishes to pull uh, any of these items, uh, just please uh, let me know and we will do so. And then um, so I'm going to read these out loud for us. Item three is adopting the minutes of the November twelfth council meeting. Item four is appointment to the following boards and commissions. To the library board, we're reappointing uh, Carrie Pridemore and appointing Meg Wagner to replace Sandra Velo. BDC Board of Directors, we're reappointing John Holmes. Uh, the belting, uh, the Building and Standards Commission, we're appointing alternates Elizabeth Scamardo and Clinton Bailey. Um, the Central Texas Housing Consortium, uh, Board of Directors, we're appointing Melinda Golden to replace Linda Angel. And on the planning and zoning, we are appointing Lisa Camford uh, to replace Kelsey Vtech. Item five is adopting a resolution releasing twenty-two point two acres located on Rocking M Lane, owned by Alan and Lindy Guston and known as Belcad Property ID one nine four six eight five from Belton's ETJ. Item six is consider a resolution or to adopt a resolution releasing five acres located along Williams Road owned by Salado ISD and known as a portion of Belcad Property ID five zero nine six one one. Item said seven is a resolution amending a resolution number twenty twenty-four twenty-five R related to the submission of the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for drainage improvements in the area of West Avenue I and South Mitchell Street. And then finally, item eight is authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Casper, Patrick and Associates for design and bid phase services for the design of waterline re- relocations required for phase two of the Loop One Twenty-One widening project.
I move we approve items three through eight as presented. Second.
We have a motion and second to approve items three through eight. Any comments before we vote? All right, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, it passes uh, six to one, six to zero, sorry. Six, zero, sorry, sorry. I was doing subtraction in my head and that one was a remainder kind of floating around. What do I do with that? Yeah. I knew what a remainder was though, you know, so. All right, uh, planning and zoning. Uh, item nine is to hold a public hearing and consider a zoning change from commercial highway to planned development. And this item is going to be postponed indefinitely. So do we need to take action to do so?
Move postpone item nine indefinitely. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to postpone item nine. Any other comments, questions? All those uh, in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, sorry, Stephanie, I'm fast on this thing, so I'll slow down a little bit. Uh, yeah, so.
There's a delay.
Yeah, uh, from our Baylor Math Whiz, uh, that would be six zero. It's uh, college football, obviously. So item ten is hold a public hearing and consider a zoning change from commercial highway to retail on approximately point three eight acres located at nine twenty-one South Main Street, north of Interstate fourteen and west of Interstate thirty-five. Christina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanksgiving.
All right, for this application, the applicant intends to build a small office for retail, uh, real estate, sorry, um, business, and she plans to um, excuse me. She plans to advertise this property as available for future development. Again, this is the location of that property. It is right off of South Main. It is um, just west of thirty-five and north of Interstate fourteen. As you can see, this property is currently undeveloped. This property has water and sewer from Belton. Um, it is part of the Imagine Belton, um, South Main Street area. The intended use is consistent with that desire use in a, um, Imagine Belton plan. Um, uses allowed in retails, bakery, um, barbershop, office type of developments are usually permitted in that area. So what's being requested is a permitted use in a retail district. The future land use map identified this area as a mixed use um, corridor. Um, so the proposed real estate office also fits in. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their meeting on the sorry, on the last week, on the nineteenth, and they unanimously recommended approval of this item. With that, all of the standards must conform to the retail district and a civil site plan and building construction plans are required for approval of any development on this lot. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have, and I don't see the applicant in the audience.
All right, well, we will uh, give others uh, opportunity to talk. We will um, open the floor for public comments on this item. If anybody wishes to speak in favor or against this item, let us know. There being no public comments, we will close the public hearing and reconvene. And uh, do you guys have any comments or questions or chair would entertain a motion?
Move we approve item number eleven as presented?
Second or ten?
Ten.
Oh, I'm sorry, ten.
Yep.
Oh.
I'll second the ten. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item ten as presented. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Again, six, zero. Thank you, Tina. Item eleven, hold a public hearing and consider a zoning change from agricultural and light industrial to planned development light industrial on approximate fifty-six acres located at eight fifteen Elm Grove Spur at the southeast corner of Elm Grove Spur and Capitol Way.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This site is intended for a warehouse distribution center, and that includes all the associated uses that's currently permitted in the LI district, including outdoor storage, um, electrical charging station, et cetera. The applicant requested a consideration for a building height with this application is currently zone LI. This planned development will allow for a taller building than the thirty-five feet that's currently allowed in the light industrial and development. As part of this, there is four point three acres of this property that's currently ag, and this is also requested zone that as a planned development light industrial as well. So um, here is a map showing the location. It is south of Elm Grove Spur and just on the east side of Capitol Way, the blue area is the part that's already zone LI. The green area towards the bottom of that is the four point three acres that's agricultural. With that, um, we're going to subdivide this into two tracks in the future. Um, the future subdivision plot will, will worry about the drainage and the street impro- improvements necessary to uh, get the site developed. Um, the track A, that property is owned by Bearden Investments, and they plan to um, develop the site as an office or industrial facility. They are requesting a building height of forty feet for this area. Because this part is adjacent to residential uses, um, of fence and landscape screening are required for this portion. Track B is where the applicant will be developing their warehouse distribution center. They are requesting a fifty-foot building height to accommodate their facility. It will be constructed of concrete, um, panels with a painted fin- finish. Because this is not adjacent to residential development, they are requesting landscaping for adjacent screening requirement. The future land use map, um, it shows this as residential. One of their condition is that we consider this for industrial to match with what they're currently proposing. Notices were sent out to property owners within two hundred feet of the property. We have one letter of support and one letter in opposition due to drainage and traffic concerns with the development. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this at their last meeting, and they recommended approval of the requested zoning change. Without the development, should conform to the light industrial standards. A permitted building height of forty feet is allowed on track A, a permitted building height, the fifty is allowed on track B. Amendment to the comprehensive plan, um, of course, you guys know this, that we're in the process of doing a flume update. That will be coming to you guys in early next year, and that will be reflected on, the change will be reflected on the updated map. A final subdivision plot is required. Um, civil plans and construction, building construction plans are also required for development. Um, acceptable building materials include everything that's in our design standard, along with the concrete, um, textured panels that they're proposing. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have, and I believe there's a couple of representatives in the audience. Should you have any questions for the applicant?
Here's the opportunity. So we will uh, close the council deliberations, open the floor for public comments uh, for or against this item. Anyone wishes to speak, may do so. Cynthia. Name and address for the record.
Cynthia Hernandez, Belton Economic Development Corporation, and we're at four twelve East Central Avenue. And uh, we are speaking, I'm speaking in support of this project. We led the rezoning effort on the fifty-one acre tract to light industrial, and we've been working with the property owners and the prospects for this um, site, and so um, we're just in support of the project. We think there'll be some great opportunities in the future and the adjacent, um, that area is light industrial, and we believe it's the highest and best use, so. Thanks.
Thank you. What else? All right, there being no other comments, I'll close the floor and reconvene the council. Any comments, questions, or chair would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the item as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item. All right, uh, comments?
I was just going to say, I, I do like the idea that the height, the stair step from forty to fifty and not fifty all the way across. I think that'll be uh, help of the, those across the street.
Yeah.
So very much in favor of the project. Thank you.
And, and follow up question, uh, you mentioned concrete panels on the fifty-foot height. Is that also meant for the forty-foot or did, did, do we don't, we don't know?
We don't know yet on the forty foot. Um, I'm guessing it's going to be similar to what they propose on Wheat Road, which is a similar type of um, development.
Understood. Tilt wall is, I guess.
The walls.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor of this item, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Again, passes six, zero. Item twelve, hold a public hearing and consider a zoning change from retail to retail with a S U P for a car wash on approximately two point three four acres located at one hundred North Loop One Twenty-One at the northeast intersection of North Loop One Twenty-One and FM ninety-three. Christina.
All right, thanks again. Um, this is an application for a car wash at the intersection of Loop One Twenty-One and FM ninety-three. The conceptual site plan shows approximately five thousand square foot facility with adequate circulation and screening provision, hours of operation that they're proposing is from seven AM to eight PM. Um, here is a site location. This is area zone retail. The adjacent sites are mostly retail separate to the north, which is a multi-family zoning district. Current look at the property, as you can see, this is the staging area for the text dot road construction. I'm gonna skip.
It is corner in Belton.
Go skip on to look at the site plan application. So for the site plan, there are three access that's pro- um, proposed. Um, most of this is already used, um, in use, and they provide access to adjacent properties. So there's one off of, oops, sorry. There's one off of Loop One Twenty-One and two off of FM ninety-three. Here is the location of where that um, car wash facility is. There are three drive lanes to get in there, which narrows down to one. There are nineteen vacuum spaces um, closer to FM ninety-three area. Um, and then there are three additional parking spaces for employees and one ADA parking space um, closer to the front. Landscaping is provided along the perimeter of the roadway and also around the building. Here is a elevation that shows the signage that they're also proposing. Um, there are four signs that in total, there are two hundred and eighty-eight square feet. It's a little bigger than what we allow in our current sign code, but as you can see, they have multiple sides and it looks appropriate for this type of development. They also propose one freestanding monument sign that is twenty-five square feet and four uh, feet tall, um, which meets our current does um, requirements as well. With an S U P, we look at how appropriate is the use, um, how compatible it is with the surrounding use. Um, the s- the site plan that was provided minimizes um, impact to the closest residential neighbors by placing the vacuum cleaners closer to FM ninety-three. Um, it seems appropriate because of the pro- proposed hours. Our noise ordinance kick in at nine PM. They're closed by eight PM, so um, meets our requirements for noise. Um, the location, this is two major intersections, seems suitable for this type of use. Mitigation of impact, again, the hours um, meet our requirements and seems appropriate. The future land use map identified this area as a commercial center. Um, notices were sent out to property owners within two hundred feet. We received two letters of support for the project. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of this um, zoning change. Development must be, uh, must comply to all the retail zoning district. Automatic car wash is allowed, site plans, building plans are required, and signage totally two hundred and eighty-eight square feet is allowed. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, and also the applicant's representative, Bill Gabler is here. Should you have any questions for him?
All right, well, we will um, allow the public to have comments, so we will uh, open the floor for public for the public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak in favor or against this item, now's the time to do so. All right. We will close the floor and reconvene the council. Uh, do you guys have um, questions or comments?
I do. So the lighter, what looks to be the lighter colored road around, I mean, that's all part of development. One of its kind of on the property line looks like, and the rest is on their property. Is that all shared access? For future development?
It is shared access for future development and existing development. There is multi-family housing on the north that access will provide uh, connection for them as well. And then when the site gets developed in the future, they will also have access off of the existing driveways that's there.
Got it. My second question relates to the, it looks like there's one cutout for the duplex. I'm assuming this is going to be the duplex driveway as well now?
Correct.
And then there's one cutout. Is that sufficient? I don't know exactly where the property line is, but I know those duplexes are pretty spread out. I wasn't sure if there was enough. See, there's like that one cutout?
Correct.
That's enough to get to the other one or?
Yeah, it's currently just one.
And then my last question was the three parking spaces. I know the one on Lake Road, I think they had to build an additional parking on the back because they had too many employee parking, so I just wonder like if at this point, or is three all that we can ask for, or is that like, have we thought about that or? Because I know they added more parking for employees, so I wasn't sure.
I, this is what they thought was adequate for the site, but again, that might be another future permit in the kind of like how they did Lake Road, realized it wasn't working for them. Um, and then add from some more parking if needed. There is space available. You can see where the big detention basin is. There's also they could probably cut into that to add some additional spaces if needed.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think more parking is going to be needed, but also that's an issue for the final flat more so than the zone. But I think that will be.
I always forget that when we get printed, present all these nice pictures, it's not.
Yeah. I, I think that'll probably be necessary then. Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I think um, more parking than probably do a little study, and we might need to encourage and, and at least interview the current people and say, why did we, why did you increase and how many do you think is good? So, because once they've done that, it's not full all the time, but it, there's always cars in it, so. Um, the question I had is on the detention pond. Um, so it's showing on the north of that, is that a bowl? I guess the road is, it basically, the road is, all the road paved area is going to be above grade and the area in there is below grade. And then I'm assuming that that's a drainage. Uh, the dotted line, is that drainage to go out of there?
They plan to drain it to the Nolan Creek, so there's a utility easement that they're working on to be able to drain it out of there to the creek.
Okay, right. And so that's in, which lines up somewhat with the sewer line, is that? Water line, sewer line? Uh, th- these are preliminary, I know.
Correct. The water line, sewer line will be coming in from the back. Um, I believe this is where it is, and it will be extended on to the property.
I'm for the project, but I'm just curious, do we monitor the noise levels in all? I know the the blowers and fans get pretty loud attacks.
We recently had a question about that. I found out the police department does have a decibel reader if they needed to go out to look at that.
But I, I hope we, we know what it is ahead of time and don't have to have a tone them down or something, but I mean, we can, you can hear those fans pretty far off, and they can get pretty loud, and with uh, multifamily next to it, that may be a little bit of a concern.
We, we certainly have that capability to monitor eighty-five decibel level is the limit, I believe, chief?
Yes, sir. We were just looking. It's going to be eighty-five decimals during the day, and eighty-five decimals is pretty loud, so.
Perfect. Yeah, the, the way that they've oriented, we've um, we've got um, some property near the current um, car wash, and uh, the biggest noise is the air dryer for the uh, the cars as they exit, and that's facing east, which currently is nobody. It's just, so whatever that is, is going to hear those blowers. Um, because that's, that's where everything else is, is pointed away from where people are living. Um, and I appreciate that uh, the vacuums are the opposite side, and full disclosure, I've got the duplexes right next to it, so. So I do have a vested interest. It, it's ironic that uh, I, I live next door to a car wash, and I'm going to have to go around the whole city of Belton just to get to it because of the way they've designed Loop One Twenty-One. So. All right, any other comments or questions?
Move to approve item twelve as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve item twelve. Any other comments before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, passes again six, zero. Thank you very much. All right, lucky thirteen. Consider author, or yeah, consider authorizing the purchase of an aerial apparatus. I think like drones when I hear aerial apparatus, aerial a- apparatus and associated equipment for the fire department from Sidens Martin, and I'm saying that right, Sidens Martin Emergency Group through the H G A C Purchasing Cooperative. All right, brother John?
All right, first I've got to start off by pointing out that our PowerPoint is blue because the last PowerPoint that PD did was red, so this is kind of a payback for him.
That's good.
Yeah. So um, I'm sure that you guys are familiar with and, and have seen our current Quint Two, which is a two thousand and four. It's twenty years old. Um, it's a Spartan seventy-five foot aerial, uh, twelve fifty GPM gallons per minute. It's got some miles and, and some hours on it. Um, has served the city very well over the last twenty years. Uh, but the life of a, uh, the expected life of an aerial apparatus or ladder truck. Is that better?
Yes.
The ladder truck is about twenty years um, in, in frontline service, which it, it has done in about five years of reserve status is what's expected. Now, aerial apparatus is what we used to be able to get done in about eighteen months. Um, build time has now shot out to thirty-eight to forty-five months build time, so they're quite almost four years before we can get a new truck. That's kind of why we're here today, is we know that that truck hits its twenty-five years um, pretty soon. Uh, so we want to get this purchased now, so we'll have it by the time that truck is, is at a service. Uh, Quint Two is showing signs of wear and tear, but nothing that, that isn't expected on a twenty-year-old truck. Imagine your car being twenty years old, you, you're going to see some wear and tear. Parts are, are starting to get hard. Twenty years old, you're gonna see some wear and tear. Parts are, are starting to get hard to find. So what we've done is we've reduced the in-service time of our current Quint two. It's more, it's acting more like a reserved truck, except for on structure fires or calls that typically take. A, a, a large ladder. Our guys will jump into that truck. All the other calls, the medical calls and the car firing and things like that, they will take an engine to, to help kind of. Reserve that, that life expectancy that's left. The proposed truck that we're looking to do, it's a Pierce, it's called a Puck, which is a Pierce ultimate configuration. Is what puck stands for. It truly means pump under cab. It, it's a, it's a design that allows us to get some more compartment space, utilize that space a little bit more efficiently. But still keep the, the, the truck at a minimal size. So we are. Upping our capabilities with this truck. It's a hundred and seven foot versus a seventy five foot ladder on top. The G P Ms are going up. It's got rescue compartments. That means they're a little bit deeper. We can hold more equipment in it. The motor that in it, is in it, is a, is a pack car motor, five hundred and ten horsepower, very efficient. Very good motor. And the price of it is one million, six hundred and seventy six thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and seventy four cents. And then we're, we're expecting about a ten thousand dollar radio and insulation, once we get the truck. And I turn it now over to all the fun conversations for, for Mike.
Let the good times roll.
So the obvious question is, how do we pay for this? I asked John that question when he brought this one point six million dollar fire engine in. Exactly. That's exactly what I got back. So as you're aware, we, we have been, we have an equipment replacement fund for the fire department. And we, and we. Annually contribute towards future replacement of these vehicles. The, the challenge with, with funding a replacement for an, an item this large. Is when, if you have to do that early, earlier than you had planned, and in this case, now the build time is, is four years. Our schedules were planning on actually going out to twenty twenty nine. We're gonna replace it exactly when we thought we would replace it. It's just I have to order it four years in advance and we haven't set enough funding aside to do that. Our city charter requires us to have funding, all the funding available. Before we do any order of any kind. And that's a charter requirement and it's quite frankly, good financial management. So. In the Equipment Replacement Fund, there is. Six hundred and twenty one thousand dollars of cash at the end of fiscal year twenty four, so September thirty of twenty twenty four. That's all funds in that. I mean, that's all cash in that fund, not just dedicated to this vehicle. That's all cash. So for, in twenty twenty five, we plan on contributing five hundred and forty five thousand dollars. From the general fund into this fund. So that gives me about one point one million dollars. Of cash to pay for a, a ladder truck that's one point six million dollars. So I'm significantly short.
Quick question on the five forty five. Is that five forty five all capital replacement or is that just for the ladder truck?
That's all fun.
That's all funding, including a big chunk of that, that's ladder truck.
Absolutely. So that's the thing, that, that, that's exactly right. That one point one million is, is all cash in the fund. So what do we do with that deficit? We have a signed fund balance in the general fund of eight hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. That money came from the former civil service fund, which we created some years ago. In twenty twenty two, I believe what it was. I moved that money into the general fund and then put a fence around it called a signed fund balance. That's there for civil service type purposes. In fact, we could kind of, we could do it for anything.
The Great House Trust, is that?
No. This was separate.
Okay, 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 yeah, okay.
So we're fortunate enough, because we have that money, we could, we can cash fund this. To the, well, before the end of the year, I can write a check, we can add that, that money, transfer that money into the. Fire Department Equipment Replacement Fund and cash fund this entire purchase. Of, you know, one point six million dollars. So I'm happy to do that if council desires to do that. There is an alternative, however, and that's bond funding, either that deficit that we have. Or in fact, you could, you could bond fund this entire purchase. We are going to the bond market in February. To issue bonds for that, for the wastewater treatment plant certificates of obligation for. The wastewater treatment plant along with other utility projects. What we could do. If you wanted to is add this fire engine to that certificate of obligation. I would, I would structure that bond as a short term, like a ten year term for the, for this ladder truck. Not a twenty year term like we would do for the, for the waste wastewater plant. So that shorter term, when we asked our financial advisor, kind of like what sort of interest rate might we expect for a ten year C O? And the, and their current expectation is like three point three percent. That's gonna change daily, you know, we're, but, but we're getting fairly close to the time that we'll go to market. So I think that's gonna be. A, a rather good interest rate for us. Just FYI, it's like three point nine for twenty years. So we, we could stay below four for that entire certificate. So that's an alternative, if you'd like to discuss that, I'd be happy to, to do that. I just wanted to throw that out. Again, more than happy to cash fund this in, in total. Debt service payments, if you decided to finance the entire one point seven million, just to give you an idea, debt service payments, annual debt service payments are. Like a hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars a year, so less than two hundred thousand dollars per year for debt service. Total interest costs for the one point seven would be right around three hundred thousand, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's, that's more cost for the fire engine, obviously, if there's interest cost there. But the equivalent set aside for the next four years. That we're planning on doing is, is also right around that two hundred thousand dollar mark, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So what I would propose, if you wanted to bond fund the entire transaction, I would take that two hundred thousand dollars. That we planned on setting aside for the next four years. And I, instead of directing that money to the, to the Equipment Replacement Fund, I would put that two hundred thousand dollars into the debt service fund. And actually, there would be no property tax effect for that one point seven million. Because I'm already covering it with general fund dollars, whether it's going into an equipment replacement fund or going into the debt service fund. It's about the same amount of money. So we could go a long ways towards doing that if you wanted to. What that would do if you bond funded that entire purchase, I'm not wiping out the entire cash balance of the Equipment Replacement Fund. Which I would be doing if I cash funded. We would keep that eight hundred and seventy two thousand dollars of assigned general fund reserves. We could use that, and I'm just making this up. I don't know what the use might be in the future, but if we ended up needing to increase. Salaries for public safety, remember we had when last comp study, we were behind and we had to have a large increase there. We could, you know, over time, I mean, there, there are other things that we could use that far. But those are certainly options. I'm not saying one's more preferred than the other. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. From council.
I had two quick questions. One is, what's the contractual requirement on down payment versus full payment?
So we get the, the one point six million dollar price that you see tonight is what they call a prepayment amount. As opposed to waiting four years to pay that, it's like one point nine or something if you wait four years to do it. So you gain some savings there, if you will, by doing, by doing a prepayment. I don't know if I would necessarily write a check by, before December thirty first or wait until we did the bond issuance. We could do a reimbursement resolution and, and the bond would pay us back whatever we repaid. Does that sort of answer the question?
Yeah, sort of does, yeah. Just trying to figure out what the cost of coming up with the cash now versus paying.
Does that price gear hold until February?
Yes.
The other one is if you do a bond, and let's say at some point, we, rainy day, we actually. Got a little extra cash and we decide, hey, we're gonna pay this thing off early. Are these bonds that you've talked to, are those? What do you call it?
Callable.
Callable.
Yeah. I would work with our financial advisor to, to, to put in as short a call as we can. This particular term would only be a ten year term for this particular piece of equipment anyway. And generally, those first call provisions are around year eight or nine, you know, but we might could negotiate something shorter, especially if it's, you're just talking about. This piece of equipment. There may be some shorter call that we can, we can put in there. I'll, I would have to talk about that. There, there is certainly some benefit to that and I'm a big fan of early calls.
Mike, I sure like that we don't have a minimal issuance cost. We tag along with our other issuers that we have. The rate seems pretty attractive. The existing fire truck is a twenty five year item for us. It was also done with a bond issuance, if I'm correct. You know, twenty plus years ago. And so I think rates are actually working in our favor. We're currently earning five.
Correct.
On our cash, we've set funds aside, a hundred and ninety eight thousand a year with the early payoff option. I think it's pretty attractive, been pretty sensible.
I'd like to make one comment, that we, as we talked to the bond council today about that and council member, Pro Tim Holmes, mentioned. The bond issue in two thousand and two for the current air ladder truck and the fire station and rehab of Central. Was a cost of about one point nine altogether. But the legislature has gotten increasingly restrictive on. What a city can issue debt for without voter approval. In that case, in two thousand and two, that was a voter approved G O bond. But public safety equipment is an exception. And so we can include that in the bond issue that we're doing already without. Vote improvement necessary. And so the legislature recognizes the importance of public safety equipment. So that's, that's an opportunity for us as well.
The. The cost of the bond and interest compared to the cost of just writing them a check four years from now. Seems comparable.
Comparable, right.
Except that interest is for all ten years and the decrease is only for the four-ish, so.
Yeah, and it would be.
Rate would be.
Yeah. So that's correct.
Another just general question is, being the new guy up here. If I go buy. A new pickup tomorrow and write a check for it and then decide later, you know, I might not wanna. Part with all that cash. I can just go get a note on the pickup. Next week after I've paid cash for it. Is that? How this works? Can we, could, could we write a check for the truck and then say, eh, you know, I don't know, maybe we want to keep some of that cash and go. Reimburse ourselves with a bond later, or is it now or never?
It's, so the way it works is through a, through a mechanism called reimbursement resolution. And so what that reimbursement allows, resolution allows you to do. Is reimburse yourself for costs that are incurred sixty days prior to. Signing that reimbursement resolution. In other words, you're saying, okay, well, let's just take this for example. I could. To secure the, the lowest possible price, I could, I could take all of this cash that we're talking about here now. And, and actually write a check at the end of the month, end of December for one point six million dollars. And then, you know, we're good. We do a reimbursement resolution in January. Council's going to see the beginning of this debt issuance. At its meeting in January. We include without a reimbursement resolution. And then when we issue bonds in February, I get the entire one point six million dollars if you wanted to do the whole thing. I get, because now that bond money is coming in, right? And then I'm gonna refill the coffers of all of this cash. With, with bond money and then we pay it off in ten years. But you got sixty days to do it, correct. That's the only time that you're allowed to do that.
That, that's, that's a good question and you'd need to check with bond counsel on that, whether or not that financing could be for purchase money. Or for. Basically a loan back. And I'm, I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but it, the. The exceptions to what the legislature done are, are very limited. So you'd want to make sure. You knew you could do that before you thought about doing that. And it may just be limited to purchase money.
I mean, we're earning more interest than we'd be. Paying on it, so.
I mean, John Best, throw a number out. How long you think we'd earn more than three point three?
Oh, I think the forecast, our forecast is for, I think this will excessive for the Fed to cut rates by point and a half in twenty twenty five. I think that more realistically is a point. So we could see the rate come down a little bit between now and issuance. So get a little closer to three, but I think we may continue to earn four. Very realistically, three and a half to four percent on our cash. But I also think it's a, it's a, a, a long-term asset, a long-life asset. I think about this, not as long as the water tower, but a very similar situation where we're able, able to keep our cash. And finance that water tower for two percent or something. Kill it there. So I just think it's a good opportunity for us to, and to, 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 for us to continue to. Increase the Equipment Replacement Fund and not deplete it. At a hundred and ninety eight thousand dollar a year, you know, I don't know, kill us.
Yeah.
With the early payoff.
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the bond option. I mean, just, just the rates itself and then I hate going, quote unquote, cash broke and. Especially on something that we can't touch for four to five years. And if something else drastic happens in that meantime. You actually have a long-term asset coming to satisfy a bond versus something you'd have to spend fixed now.
Yeah.
That you can't bond out.
And just to clarify, you're talking on the entire cost, not just the deficit?
Yeah, I mean. What, what's the deficit number again?
The true deficit is about six hundred thousand, five seventy or whatever that math comes out to be, but.
I mean, with what we used to have still sitting in, quote unquote, the bank and you're in a five percent.
Correct.
I mean, as much as I hate paying for something I can't touch. In full.
Yeah.
The bond makes me feel a little better.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the purchase of the aerial apparatus. With the possibility of exploring bond option or bond issuance in the later day.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of the aerial apparatus. We'll discuss the funding and financing of that later. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, it, it passes. Six, zero. All right, so that's all we have.
Can't wait to see that truck sitting out there at T M L. Yeah, drive that one back.
All right, well, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Good luck to the Aggies and the Longhorns. Only one's gonna be victorious. And so somebody's gonna be happy and somebody's not. So here's the bragging right. So again, thank you guys for being here. Our executive session that we will be having. I will not have any action afterwards, so we will end after that, so.
Get for me.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, just for you to record.
Yeah.
All right, the executive.